I call this April 17 meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Want to welcome all of you and ask that you please stand with us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Sommer, call the roll, please.
Mr. Benbury, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Schramke.
Here.
Mr. Shadle.
Here.
Mr. Wade.
Here.
Sheriff Grisillas.
Here. Ms. Schramke, you have our minutes motion?
I move that the reading of the minutes for April 3, 2017 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting is prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Wade. Are there any corrections, additions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Aye.
Ms. Schramke.
Aye.
Mr. Shadle.
Aye.
Sheriff Grisillas.
Aye.
Mr. Wade, you have our first item of business.
Yes, I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed text amendment of the Paducah zoning ordinance by establishment, or excuse me, by establishing section 126-88, mobile food vehicles be adopted.
Second. Second by Schramke. This is a public hearing, so we invite anyone who would like to speak in regards to this issue to come up and speak, but I do believe before we do that, that you have a presentation you'd like to show, so we'll dim the lights, we'll take a look at the video and, or the presentation that he has, and then we'll accept your comments.
This is for the mobile food vehicle text amendment. This would be specifically for the Paducah zoning ordinance by establishing a new section for the guidance of mobile food vehicles.
Josh, I don't know if you can hear me.
The purpose for the presentation is provide an overview for the mobile food vehicles within the zoning ordinance.
Is your microphone turned on?
Yes. So. Some of the research we did on the text amendment came from cities across the United States. We didn't look at anything really large except for St. Louis because it's regional. We did look at cities across Kentucky. We also looked at other regional cities such as Carbondale, Illinois, Evansville, Indiana, Jonesboro, Arkansas, and Clarksville, Tennessee. Some of the things we looked for was distance to restaurants, if tables and chairs are allowed, their general hours, if they require a permit, and if they're allowed on city or state right-of-way. What we're proposing for location is that they can operate within the city of Paducah right-of-way and public parking lots and commercial zones. Specifically, they are not allowed on the state of Kentucky right-of-way, which would be Third and Fourth and Kentucky Avenue. Mobile food vehicles may operate on parcels that contain non-residential uses in all commercial zones. Specifically what that affects is the mixed-use zone, the H2 zone, the NCCZ, Neighborhood Commercial Quarter Zone, and Fountain Avenue, the NSC zone, and also on planned unit developments. The mobile food vendor, they, what they have to do is provide a certain permission from the property owner to locate on private property. That's something they have to attach to their application whenever they submit it to us. They can locate in public parks with written permission from the Paducah Park Services Department or McCracken County. McCracken Counties is really going to depend more on Carson Park, they're the ones that I can think of, that has that ownership. And they may not operate for more than 14 consecutive days in one location. They do have to wait 30 days before they return. And that's according to the Kentucky Administrative Regulations. That's a sister set of laws and rules and regs to the KRS that we're familiar with. This map is of downtown Paducah. What we're proposing is they cannot locate within 100 feet of the principal restaurant, entrance of any restaurant. So as you can see, they won't be allowed around Market House Square, and Broadway is pretty constricted. Of course, that would be citywide out by the mall or South Side or anywhere else. This is just to give the commission an idea of what downtown would look like where they could locate. The green circles is the 100 feet that they would have to stay out of. As far as traffic, they should not be allowed to obstruct traffic or pedestrian flow. They'd have to keep a minimum four feet open on the sidewalk. And they can only utilize two parking spaces either on the street or off the side. And all traffic control devices, they have to be able to see them, and they cannot block fire hydrants. They may operate from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. However, if they're located on private property and the business is open, they can stay open later. For example, Walmart's open 24 hours, so they can stay there until 2:00 a.m. is what we're proposing. The purchase district health department, these are their rules and regs for mobile food vehicles. What we did is we wrote these rules and regulations specifically into the text amendment. For miscellaneous provisions, they do have to have a garbage receptacle, and they may not serve alcoholic beverages unless permitted as part of a special event, which would be like barbecue on the river, Lower Town Arts and Music or something to that effect. They may not locate within 2,500 feet from a permitted special event. That way, there's no competition for like barbecue on the river, quilt week, or anything like that. Must adhere to the safety guidelines of the Fire Prevention Division, and that is a specific sheet that is available in Fire Prevention that they will hand to applicants whenever they come down to get their trucks inspected. They may not use bells, music, horns, or other audible sounds, and the noise level must comply with the city's noise ordinance. Generators are not going to be permitted on Broadway or Second Street or within 100 feet of a residence. We are going to be handing out an application in the Planning Department. Right now, we do not have a cost associated with that. Other departments or entities may have costs, but we didn't want to provide a barrier for anybody that wants to open one at this time. And as part of the application, they have to attach all their, for example, the purchase district health department, Fire Prevention, whenever they get all their permits signed off one there, they have to attach it to this application before we sign off on it. And I will be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Does anyone on the commission have a question that you'd like to ask right now?
Yes. How did we determine the 100 feet? Was that just, I mean, I saw the list and it was pretty, 300 foot was one of them, 250, 200. 100 was in there for sure, but...
It was in there. We took all those distances into consideration, some of them 50 feet in cities, some of them 300. We wanted to go with some, with a distance that would provide some areas in downtown that they could go, but also protect our brick-and-mortar restaurants downtown.
I had a question also, and, you know, maybe I'm just a little confused about this, but I saw that no cables or electric can be run across, you know, walkways or anything like that, and, but then it says, you know, generators with, on Broadway are within 100 feet of a residence. But yet we permit them to be on Broadway or within 100 feet of a residence, so how do they get any type of generator, electric, something that I would think they would need to run their business?
Well, the generators would be self-contained on Broadway or wherever it may be. They can run electric if they're on private property, but they have to have that covered up in case cars or something do cross them.
So, let me understand, the food truck can be on Broadway, correct?
Yes, in limited locations.
Okay. But they can't have a generator on Broadway?
Right.
And I'm not necessarily talking about just the downtown Broadway, I'm talking about Broadway. Okay. But they can't have a generator, and they can't have electric cables running to it. So explain to me, what are they going to do?
It would have to be self-contained as far as with their cooking methods and how they go about that.
How would that, what is self-contained? I don't, I'm still wondering how they're going to have any kind of electricity or something.
Sure. Some of the food trucks cook with propane and things of that nature.
Okay.
And there's, those things are regulated by the Fire Prevention Department, which is on that checklist I was mentioning to you.
Okay.
And so they do have a means for some of them to cook that, that way. Not all of them have to operate on a generator. They can cook with, you know, like say propane or however it may be at that point.
And what about at special events where power poles have been put up specifically to service different groups? They would be able to plug into that, would they not? As long as they didn't run a cable over a road?
And as long as they have permission from whoever is setting it up.
Well, they'd have to, that would have to be attached to the application, I would guess.
You have done about the 14 consecutive days in one location, and I understand that is just from my interpretation is, what if someone were to be there for 13 days, shut down for one, does it then start over again?
That's not my underst, or that's my understanding that they can't do that. That's the verbiage directly from the KAR.
Okay. And then when it comes to the, you incorporated, or it seemed like you incorporated Health Department regulations?
Yes.
If the Health Department should change their regulations and update those, is it automatic that ours update as well, or do we have to manually?
We would have to come to the commission with a text amendment.
We'd have to have a text amendment.
And just to clarify, when they refer to the 14 days, they can be at a location 14 days, but they have to remove it every night and come back every morning?
Yes.
Correct.
And then liability insurance provisions?
We're working on that. It will be in the application.
Okay.
Josh, in the definition of mobile food vehicle, it specifically says that they can serve in individual portions?
Mm-hmm.
But then I noticed the mobile food vendor definition doesn't specify that it has to be individual portions, so is it possible that someone could have, like a catering license, for example, and own a food truck also and still, being a mobile food vehicle wouldn't prevent them from, from catering and maybe using their, their food truck to transport? It would just when they're serving to the public?
Yes, that's correct. And we have talked to some caterers about that.
Okay.
And it, two separate ways of providing services to the public in, in that direction.
Yeah. I also had a question in, about the section that had to do with alcoholic beverages.
Mm-hmm.
It says that they'll not be able to serve alcoholic beverages unless permitted as part of a special event, so does that, is there a specific license that they'll have to have?
Yes.
A special event license?
Yes.
And that's the only type of license that a food truck can have?
They'll have to give permission from the special event, whichever it may be, and how they're permitted. They'll also have to be permitted through the clerk's office with ABC licenses.
I was going to say, wouldn't ABC have to approve that as well?
Yes.
And I was thinking also about the 100 feet from a residence.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For instance, Jefferson, okay, Jefferson toward the downtown area is, could be within 100 feet of the Second Street condos and those areas, so, I mean, what are we talking about, 100 feet, 100 by street, 100, you know?
Direct line of sight.
In other words, if they would park on Jefferson by the quilt museum, they would be within 100 feet of residences.
How we have it structured right now is by zone. If they go into the B3 zone, which is general business, they can locate on any parcel if there's a house on it or not, or within 100 feet. Now, without, out of the 100 feet, what I believe you is talking about is if it's on a planned unit development or the NSC zone, NCCZ, what that is, is a mixed-use type zone, where you can have residences, you can have businesses, but they do have to stay 100 feet from the residents in that zone.
It says that mobile vehicle, food vehicles are prohibited from vending 2,500 feet from special event permitted areas, but that would not include food vehicles that have received a permit or have received approval to be part of that event. That's correct, is it?
That's correct.
Okay.
For instance, in the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival.
Right. Yeah. As long as they're permitted by the entity, they can be in that specified location.
I know that you've said you're not going to have a cost for the license.
Right.
Do you have any idea what the costs are for the other licenses that are involved?
I, I should, I do not.
Okay.
Now, I assume, Josh, the, the two right-of-way parking spaces is kind of the general rule of thumb?
That's what a lot of cities have used that we looked at.
The, the cost for the licenses, the first I've heard about this, is this in this someplace? I mean...
Planning and zoning isn't going to require a cost, but they...
Does, is that stated someplace in here?
It is right here. No, it's not in here, I'm sorry. He just said that, because that was my question, if there was going to be a cost for the license.
There, there may be costs associated with the Health Department or Fire Prevention or other entities, but not from planning and zoning.
Not for the food truck license, but the Health Department license, for instance, does cost money.
And it's an annual, non-transferable license, right?
Calendar year, yes.
You can't transfer ownership of it.
No.
Okay.
And when you, when you say calendar year, January 1 to December 31st, or would it be from when it's applied for to when it's?
Yes, the date it's issued.
Okay.
Would an individual be allowed to hold more than one food truck license?
Yes. They have to get a separate license, though.
Would they have to be operating the food trucks under separate business entities, or is it per truck?
It's per truck on our end.
And if an existing restaurant wants to have a food truck, they're under the same guidelines, they can't park it outside in front of their building.
That's correct.
Then at this time, we'll open up for anyone who'd like to make any comment. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name, please, and then make your comment.
My, my, my name is Jermaine Frederick, my friends call me JJ, I'm JJ Wings and Things.
Excuse me, sir, our microphone isn't very loud this evening.
Can you hear me now?
Better, good, thank you.
The mic kicked out on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I'd like to tell, make this real brief, you did amazing job, Josh, amazing job. He really worked hard on this. And we've been working for quite some time on this project with, with Steve, and Josh is coming in and taking over now. Some of these questions, I can, really, I can answer some of them because I've been doing this for quite some time. Josh is in the Planning Department, but I've dealt with the Health Department, and there is a fee. Typically, it runs, you can buy yearly, and it may, it went up, it was actually $35, but it's went up to 235, yeah, a year. But that's what the right plumbing, if you, if your trailer has the right, or a food truck has the right plumbing, you pay a yearly fee once a year. But if it doesn't, then you have to pay every time you set up. So the, the 14 day, every two weeks, you have to pay every time you get, if you don't have the right plumbing, you have to pay, I believe it's $235 every two weeks. But that's, that's just the, the state rule, and it's been in effect for quite some time, so this ain't, this is nothing new. They just implemented in, you know, the rules that exist right now. So, you know, and then as far as the, the 100 feet from the restaurants, this is just my end, you know, my outlook on it. I have no interest in setting up anything 100 feet in front of anybody's business. I don't know if that makes sense to you. I want to get so far away from someone else's restaurant. This is the city. We, we've got land that spreads out, I don't know how many miles, but find a location and build. Find you a location and build. I mean, I got, I got plenty, I've got a lot of ideas. I'm just going to throw one out there. I, I wasn't going to do it, I'm going to throw one out there. Information H Park, there's businesses. Information H Park, there's no food. They have to leave to go out to the mall area to get food. There's no restaurants. You can set up out there and, and make good money, I believe. I, I, that's what I believe. So I'm out of Usec, well, and, but I'm getting ready to bag out, Usec, but I'm headed to Lewis Pavilion. So with that being said, find you a spot, find you a location and build. What everybody's trying to do is go Broadway, you know, Second Street Downtown. I don't want to set up in front of Dozy Place. I like Dozy Place, it's a great, it's big, great people, the, the owner is great, and there are people there that, that work there, and they depend on people coming in to, you know, to pay their bills. So I wouldn't set my food truck up there. I would go, I would get so far away from restaurants and other businesses that, you know, and just build. Like I said, Lewis Pavilion, there's no food in Lewis Pavilion. There's food at Lewis Hospital, but no food at Lewis Pavilion. So that's, that, that, that's, I'm just want to give you guys a little insight on how this can easily, we, we, we can do this and, and, and this can be great, this can be really great for the city. People are going to start coming in and they're going to start using these food services. And not to mention the tax revenue we're going to get out, the people getting the licenses, so they, it's going to get pretty expensive with the permits. It, I mean, but it'll be, it's worth it. It's worth it. And I just wanted to say, once again, thanks, Josh. I'm just trying to give you guys a little insight on, because I've been doing this, I've been doing it for a long time, from the farmer's market, I, I cooked at the farmer's market, and I was the only person there when, when it first started. The farmers weren't even there, and I was out there cooking it, I, not one person came. But I never gave up. I never gave up. I paid my 35 bu, my $35, no, my $50 for the whole summer, and, and, and I had fun with it. You know, it was a, it was a great opportunity, it put me out there, people got to see, you know, what I had to offer. So I started moving up, and I went to the Lower Town Arts Festival. I would set up out by the mall, wherever they let me. I'll ask the people, hey, can I set my food up? And they let me do it. And barbecue on the river, from barbecue on the river to the Lake Bargley, Superman Celebration, the Blues and Qs, you name it, I've done them all. And Usec, Fluor, they came, the government came and said, hey, look, we heard about those gyros, we want them out here. And I was like, oh, man, that's, that's, so I did it, and I served a lot of people daily. We did it every day out of Fluor. And now my time is about up because I'm getting old, so I can't really do what I used to do. But Lewis Pavilion came, and they was like, hey, we heard about those gyros, and we want you at Lewis', and I was like, you know what, I'm going to give it one more shot. So I'm headed to Lewis', if, if we can get this, if we can get this done, so the future it, it, it looks bright for JJ Wings and Things, and, and like I said, I'd like to thank you. We've, we've been working on this for a long time, a long time. Thanks for having me, and I just wanted to give you guys a little insight on my future plans with the mobile food truck.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay. So anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'm Leigh Ann Summers. My husband is Shelby Durham, and we own Shelby Q and Grill, and we also park at the farmer's market. We just wanted to know what the definition of a food truck or mobile food vendor was.
Do you like to read?
Um, that would be, yes, that would be nice. Is that, we didn't know if that was public or if that was something that we could get online? Okay. Then this will answer my question. Okay. May I snap a picture of this?
You can have this one, I have an extra one.
Okay, well, that's fantastic. There you go. And that's to answer my question, thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a question or comment? Does anyone on the commission have any more? Do you have any more questions, anything else you'd like to ask? Are you ready for the vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Bradford.
Aye.
Mr. Morrison.
Aye.
Ms. Schramke.
Aye.
Mr. Shadle.
Aye.
Sheriff Grisillas.
Aye. Thank you very much. Mr. Shadle, you have the Janus Clear Republic hearing?
Yes. I move that a resolution titled, "Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Amendment to a Development Plan Located at 3201 Oliver Church Road, Suite H" be adopted.
Second.
Second by Morrison.
I don't see the applicant here tonight, but what we're looking at is in the same shopping center that we've moved to now on Oliver Church Road. Night Moves Cocktail Bars wanting to locate there, and proposing two signs on the front and on the side. On the front, they're proposing a sign that's 34.34 square feet, and it's below that 20% threshold if it was in another zone of 129 and a half square feet. On the east side, toward Oliver Church Road, the proposed sign is 91.91 square feet, and again, that is under the 20% threshold if it was in another zone of 239.19 square feet.
It's not neon, though, is it? It's, it's just lit?
Yes.
Just can't imagine the color's going to be that bright.
Josh, how do they determine the parking space is required?
That's taken into account with the shopping center, whenever they built it.
Okay. Even though it's at night?
Right.
Any other questions or comments? So anyone, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak, we'd certainly ask you to come forward.
Are these lighted signs?
The one on the front is, and I believe, no, I got that backwards, Ms. Schramke. The one on the side is toward Oliver Church Road, the one on the front's not.
It's internally lit?
Yes, internally.
Constant lit signs?
As far as I know.
Flash or anything?
No, no flashing that I'm, that I'm aware of.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Bradford.
Aye.
Mr. Morrison.
Aye.
Ms. Schramke.
Aye.
Sheriff Grisillas.
Aye. Mr. Morrison, you have the M. Davis Properties waiver of subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. I move that this commission receive and file the application of M. Davis Properties for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 701 Washington Street. I further move that the requested approval be given in compliance with all other applicable provisions, that Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second by Shadle.
We didn't have comments as of the writing of the staff report from engineering, but I did receive those, and they do not have any comments for this plat.
It's unusual, or we don't see it very often, let's put it that way, to have a condominium that's really more of an office condominium, which I... which I'm assuming is what this is, within residence.
Pretty much so, no, it's not residential. It is mobile office setting. I think it's a, it fills a need.
You know, something there are needs for, for this type of development.
So will the primary entrance for all of these either be on Washington or on Seventh Street?
For Unit A, the entrance will be on, it's going to be on Seventh Street. Unit B, which has a small area downstairs and is all of the upstairs portion, is on Seventh Street. And Unit C is on Seventh Street and Washington both. And then B is just on Washington Street.
Does the garage service all of the offices or just Unit A?
Now, that garage goes entirely with Unit A.
Okay. So the rest would be on-street parking, correct?
Yes. That's the way the use of this building has been for a number of years.
Well, then, Unit B, which they're referring to as a banquet hall.
I'm sorry, ask me again.
It's being referred to as a banquet hall, Unit B? Is that a banquet hall?
Yes.
Commercial banquet, banquet? So there's no parking available for that except on the street?
Right.
Well, there would be, I'm assuming parking across the street.
Yes, there is a public parking lot directly across the street, which is a county parking lot. Unit B, just to get you oriented, I believe this, and I'm not sure of the name. I think it was Corner Square Masonic Hall is what was it? The last use, use of it is, as far as I know.
Question we would normally ask is, are there firewalls between all of these units?
Yes, there's been quite a bit of conversations back and forth with the Fire Department, getting this up to code. They've done extensive remodeling to meet the current code requirements.
That's good to know. Other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. If there's no other business to come before the commission tonight, we stand adjourned.